Separations report.
To approve.
Second motion in a second. Any discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, administration recommends releasing Jody Geisler, Dean of Students at Spirit Middle School, from his 22-23 school year contract per his request effective August 9, 2022, with damages provision enforced.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on that?
Do we have somebody replace him?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The fourth one is the administration recommends releasing Alyssa Aker, speech and language pathologist at Spirit Middle School, from her 22-23 school year contract per her request effective August 10, 2022, with the liquidated damages provision enforced.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Anthony's hard to fill.
Yes.
What do, are we gonna use CISA or what's our plan?
Well, Erica's working with the current speech and language pathologists to see what the case goes from what she's doing post the position. So they are working on it right now and we will make determination once they have that reviewed.
Okay.
If they're, remember a speech and language pathologist the best October. So they're a little bit easier to find in here versus in future because they keep helping to help their worlds.
There any other discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Administration recommends releasing Molly Johnson, the elementary teacher from Northern Lights Elementary, from her 22-23 school year contract per her request effective August 15, 2022, with the liquidated damages provision waived.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, the administration recommends releasing Ryan Engstrom, Director of Technology, from his 22-23 school year contract per her, per his request effective September 9, 2022, with the liquidated damages provision enforced.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? We've voted it down. We have to come back.
I'll be tricky.
He's gone. I know.
We have a sheriff. I'm here for a reason.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Last, administration recommends releasing Emily Geiser, science teacher at Spirit Middle School, from her 22-23 school year contract.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Um, we will be getting the exit surveys from these people as well, assuming.
We have sent them out. I'll see if they responded.
Sure.
Um, if you guys want them, I can send them.
Okay.
I don't remember from last week. Why was there no, nothing about the dam, liquidated damages on this one?
There should be. It should be enforced.
Um, I can make an amendment, a motion to amend it, or do we have to go back?
I would just to be consistent.
Just to be, yeah.
I would like to file a motion to uh, correct the statement here that it will be with liquidated damages enforced.
Is that, who was the one that had it waived?
The one above.
Molly.
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 Okay. Two above. Okay. There we go. There we go.
Who seconded your motion?
I'll second, sorry.
No, I don't.
Who, who? Who did?
Who did second originally? Are you in agreement with that?
Yep.
Okay.
There you go.
Thanks. And again, the recommendations in here are per the handbook language. That's why.
Kyle, can I just vote on that? Be done with it or we have to vote on the adding the?
No, I think you can just vote on it.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There was one discussion item last week and that was, uh, discuss the meet and confer guidelines. You're still working on that?
I'm working on some dates and then I'd like to get some communication out to staff so they know this is coming. I anticipate that going in maybe the October newsletter, so we'll need to talk through that.
I also just, um, I don't know where we were gonna put, I thought maybe on here that we would address like who was gonna be in charge of minutes or like the roles. Um, I think Brooke had brought up.
I'm working on a document that will support that.
Okay.
So we'll have that ahead of time.
That's it. It'll be worked on. It'll be.
Right now to try to get some coordinated data.
Depending on how this goes, I mean, um, the school year is long and the beginning of the, you know, the first half of the year is a lot of times different than the second half. Um, I guess I would just ask that maybe we could consider if it should be done more than once a year, even though that might seem like a lot. We'll see what this is like, but maybe twice a year just to get.
My only concern is we need to do it for all employee groups.
Mm-hmm.
If part of the purpose of this is to help inform handbook changes,
Mm-hmm.
we really need those updates before the end of February.
Yeah.
And just FYI, it's already sort of challenging to do four of them because we have to do them for each employee group.
Okay.
So.
That's why it would be meeting multiple times a month if you wanted to do it that way, but. Oh, all I was asking is reevaluate, uh, before next year.
Yep.
See how it goes this year.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, there were no informational items, so I would entertain a motion to accept the Personnel and Negotiations Committee's report as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any question? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Teaching and Learning Committee had no action items, no discussion items, and two informational items. At the committee of the whole meeting on September 6, 2022, Crystal Hinsman, Director of Our Curriculum Instruction, shared a back-to-school update. And at the committee of the whole meeting on September 6, Jennifer Willby, Director of Early Childhood and Family Education, shared an update, an update on early childhood. There's nothing more. I would entertain a motion to accept the Teaching and Learning Committee's report as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Next, we had the Budget and Insurance Committee. There's one action item. The administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in August of 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Very none. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries.
This is Shannon. Thanks for getting back to us so quick.
There were no discussion items, informational items, uh, Fund 10 expenditure report. Was, we went through that. Motion on that. If not, I would entertain a, a motion to accept the Budget and Insurance Committee's report as presented.
Motion to, second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Operations Committee had no action items, no discussion items. The one informational item, uh, was at the committee of the whole meeting on September 6, David Seer, Director of Transportation, shared information on bus driver appreciation night and a back-to-school update. Everything went really well with the, the buses this year. With that, I'd entertain a motion to accept the Operations Committee's report as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Very none. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Legislative Committee had no action items, no discussion items, and got three informational items. Uh, Governor announced the release of the $90 million in federal funds for school districts as public schools prepare to begin the upcoming school year facing significant staffing challenges against increased student mental health needs. Governor Evers today announced the release of $90 million in federal funds for Wisconsin school districts. It is important to note that these are one-time funds and you could review, view the governor's full press release on the attached, or on the link. Next, the September 12 deadline to submit comments on proposed changes to the federal Title IX regulations. The U.S. Department of Education's proposed rule to modify, amend the federal Title IX regulations is currently subject to a public comment opportunity for school districts and other interested parties to submit feedback to influence the final version of the regulations. The deadline for submitting comments on the proposed rule is September 12, 2022. And the last informational item, uh, tax collections continue to exceed projections. The new memo from the nonpartisan Legislative Fiscal Bureau, LFB, shows tax collections are above the agency's January estimates by $1.5 billion. This continues a trend of an exceptionally healthy state financial picture that will allow the state to invest in K-12 education and other priorities in the 23 through 25 state budget if policymakers decide to do so. And a note that the articles shared were pulled from legislative updates on the WFE site. With that, I'd entertain a motion to accept the Legislative Committee's report as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I've took this out there for these legislative updates. It's, there's some confusion in the community, um, where these updates come from, whether they're local or district's moving forward stuff versus that being federal or state legislative updates. So as a result of that, we're gonna, I'm gonna try to do better by adding, uh, where each article is pulled from, whether it's through the state, federal, or if it's something locally we're gonna do here. That try to add how this, how these individually affect our district or if our district is actually doing anything. I think most particularly the, uh, Title IX stuff struck a chord, uh, a nerve with the community thinking that we are going and making all these changes when that's not actually the case. That's the, that's the state doing it and asking for, um, comments on those changes statewide. So because of all that, we see a need to be more transparent on where those come from and I'm gonna adjust that and add those, I guess, notes per se on top of each item we put on there for future references moving forward.
Okay.
I will say in regards to the Title IX piece, and I don't know, Kyle, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but from my perspective, this is one piece of legislation that is incredibly time-intensive and incredibly complicated, more so than any other, um, procedures that we have, um, when it comes to disciplinary issues with staff or students. And so I just, it, I would hope that through some of this change that it becomes a little more K-12 friendly in how we, how we work on these types of issues. So, uh, that's just my perspective on some of the changes that may need to happen.
Uh, the only thing I would add to that is I think that particular section that they're working on in Title IX, I agree with everything that you said and I would, uh, uh, beat and mirror comment. The, the changes that they're working on now, I don't know that they're gonna simplify. They're gonna add further series of complications because it came, it came out of an initial directive that, as is often the case, as frustrating as it may be for all of us as citizens, it doesn't matter what the viewpoint is or how it's handed, whatever the issue is that's handed out by government, they often start, as the Affordable Care Act did, with something that comes out and it hasn't been thought through how it's gonna fall down the machine like a Plinko coin and what the results and consequences are gonna be. So, um, that's kind of what we're seeing with Title IX.
Any other discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Okay.
Opposed. Motion carries. Are there any other reports by members of the board tonight? Uh, district and program highlights.
I do wanna just mention, um, the governor, um, in the Superior last week along with State Superintendent Underly. They had reached out to us as part of their back-to-school tour and were trying to get into schools and classrooms. Um, Governor Evers and Superintendent Underly read a book to a group of fourth graders and helped serve lunch and then hung out in the lunchroom and talked to kids and, and teachers, so.
Gave out some autographs, I saw.
Yeah, they were the number one question when asked. I have your autograph. Yeah.
Job.
Yeah. So, um, it was a fun day for Northern Lights, um.
I do, I like the videos and stuff, the little updates. Those are nice.
My boyfriend thought his son was lying. And then he sighed and it was like, oh.
Well, it was kind of cute. They kind of showed up and one little boy walked by goes, are you the government?
Ask the president if I was the president.
Yeah. Felt pretty important.
Well, thank you to them for visiting. Um, it was well-received.
Any other highlights? Now, woven in consideration of bills and pre-approved bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion?
I.
Pay the bills.
I, okay, so I just see we use Amazon a lot. Do, are we eligible for Smile? Are we getting like any money back when we make our payments?
I know like the foundation has put on that if you make pay, if you make payments, you can, um, donate to that for the scholarship.
We should just see if we set up a smile because like for my work, every time, like you can just set it so that it donates a percentage. It adds up. It's not a lot at once, but if we're using that on a regular basis, it could go to the foundation or I don't know how ethically it would figure out where it would need to go or back to the school or whatever. I just.
Probably a little question we need to investigate how that works.
Yeah, the angel fund. It's really cool.
Anyways.
Was Amazon Smile?
Yeah, you can donate to any nonprofit.
Yeah.
For us non-Amazon.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it could. I try to boycott it, but sometimes.
Box at the door with the smile on it every day? I don't. All right. Uh, all those in favor, uh, of the consideration of the bills and pre-approved bills signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Any comments by members of the public tonight? It's a small crowd.
Please take a look. Smaller than Sweet Chat.
All right. With that then, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
We have treats for them.
As we warm days.
Thank you.